Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, January 10th, 2022 at 7:03 PM. Tonight, we have four committee meetings. We'll lead off with the City and Safety Services Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember McCary, joined by Councilmembers Grace, Swank, and Crowell. And if the other members of council could proceed, who are not on that committee, if they could proceed down to the table, that will help us with the discussion in differentiating who's on the committee and who's not. Okay, so we should have Councilmember McCary, Grace, Swank, and Crowell up on the dais. And so Sylvie, you'll go down to the chair, table. It takes a while to get used to the ups and downs of it, but this is a suggestion made by Law Director Eliason last year on how we differentiate amongst the committees. So that's why we're doing it. Thank you. All right, Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We have several items on the City and Safety Services Committee agenda tonight, and definitely appreciative of all the work that goes into managing these multifaceted areas of our city management, starting with IT network management services. And this is a topic pertaining to our interest in outsourcing some cloud-based technology in cybersecurity. And we have our City and Safety Services Director, who will be speaking on a number of these points, but I will begin with that.
Okay. I appreciate it, Councilmember McCary. This is something that came up last session in City Council, and ultimately, I think there were several questions that came back from various council members about moving forward with this particular initiative. And what this is, is to, rather than go and rehire a chief information officer and a system administrator, instead have those functions that previously had been done in-house be done by an external organization. And the organization that we have selected and received a proposal from is a company called BSSI. That company is out of Lancaster, Ohio, and they came highly recommended by Ohio University. As we, our connection to the outside world is through Ohio University via Ornet, and we have a little bit of their bandwidth to get out to the outside world. And so it's in our interest that, you know, we select a consultant and a managed services company to do the work that is in line with the work that is done at OU. So in the meantime, based on some questions that came back from various members of this body, we did some due diligence and found other entities that had a managed services agreement with BSSI and found they're extremely happy with the service that they have. And then also, we had a meeting here last Friday where we had a disinterested third-party, specifically the Chief Information Officer from the city of Dublin, Ohio, just doing evaluation of the proposal that we got from BSSI to say, you know, whether or not this is a direction that we should go as a city. And ultimately, I think it's going to end up being about a wash when it comes to cost between having, if not a little bit of savings, between having two full-time employees and instead doing the services contract. But what I'm asking is the council to authorize me to institute in this contract for managed services for basically our network management and managing our virtual environment.
Thank you, and we'll definitely take questions and comments, but I was hoping you could start us out by highlighting the primary concern that comes up when this type of outsourcing comes to the table, when it comes to the comfort and familiarity we have with maintaining infrastructure right in place.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the challenges that you have with IT in particular is that the technology changes extremely fast, and the environment changes extremely fast. Hardware becomes obsolete very quickly, and your ability to maintain the expertise necessary while maintaining the environment with in-house employees is pretty difficult. So the structure that we've landed on ultimately is to maintain one house, in-house employee, who functionally is the front of the house, you know, the face, so when it comes to network support for the city. And then he has, in his, in his back, behind him, in the back of the house, is this managed services company that ultimately remotes in and manages the environment. The city has a series of servers for several different departments. Our entire finance system is managed through a server and software that we pay a third-party company to, for, for the licenses and then to keep that updated. But as far as, you know, managing its living on our network, managing its security upgrades and such, that's something that we're asking BSSI to do. Same with the police department. They have a series of servers that has evidence from, you know, the last 30 years that sit on that. And, you know, the management of that system and that hardware, this would be something that this company would do. The court has their own software that runs on our network and is able to make the court function, and, you know, that cascades across all the different departments in the city. We have about 15 different buildings, so our networks are interconnected through an aging microwave system, which that's another item here on the City Safety Services Committee in our efforts to go and retire that microwave system. But, you know, ultimately, this network environment will be run by the company that we're looking to go with.
Thank you. So we want to open it up to questions and comments about this potential outsourcing. Councilmembers, Swank?
Director Stone, just a couple of pretty simple questions. Previously, what were we paying for this service that we're going to be replacing with an outside managed service, approximately?
Well, if you had to select, we had, you know, functionally, what we're doing is taking two employees, and then we're not going to rehire those two employee positions. They're not, nobody's losing a job.
Right, right.
It's based on attrition. One position we were never able to fill, actually, and then the other position is someone who resigned in the summertime and moved on. You know, two FTEs at the level that we were paying were easily $160,000 when you take all in with the benefits and salary together.
So when we're going to bring one, we're going to have one, we're going to hire?
We have one on staff.
One on staff now, so if we split it down to middle 80, what's the total going to be for the proposed configuration?
I think you misunderstand. The one on staff has always been there.
Right.
So the $160,000 number that I quoted was for two employees, the other two, basically, that no longer will exist. And so we're paying about $11,000 a month, so it looks like $130,000, $130,000, $132,000 for this managed service.
Okay. Second question, will we have a dedicated, and for lack of a better word, technician or individual, or will we be just dealing with the company as a whole, and whoever's up that day is who we're dealing with?
Right, so we have our one front-of-house employee, who is our person, who's a dedicated technician, and then we have a couple, like a project manager and a couple technicians who are generally the person that regularly deals with the city of Athens. Now, as we need to do different things, they may have different engineers or expertise there at the company that we would go to for a particular thing, but it's not as though it'll just rotate. And this is a company where all the personnel, you know, live and work in the central Ohio area, so it's not, you know, an ultimate Lancaster. This is not outsourcing to, you know, a foreign country. You're not picking up a phone and sending a message or making a call, and it's getting routed outside the country to some call center somewhere. These are all people within driving distance of the city of Athens.
Very good. And the last question, because this company, BSSI, will have access to a lot of classified information, proprietary information, if the city has such a thing, is there some kind of bonding process or security process that protects us and ensures us for a breach?
So there's not a bond, per se, but there's a significant amount of insurance. So when I think about bonds, I think about, you know, somebody posting a bond, you know, along the lines of a construction project. So, you know, if someone fails to do a construction project, we'll go and seize the bond and use that money to go and finish the project. That's kind of the, when we talk about bonding, that's what we deal with most often. In this particular instance, they carry a significant amount of insurance, as do we through our city liability insurance, where in both instances, you know, those insurance agencies that cover, you know, both this company as well as us would be able to support us should we have some sort of breach. And, you know, historically, we've had interactions along those lines with insurance about cybersecurity issues, and I'd be happy to talk to you offline about the results of that, and, you know, we were well-covered in that instance.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Member McCary. Director Stone, we've talked a little bit about some of the flexibility you lose when you're not doing it in-house and you're having it outside. I know that there are some employees who have certain software on their systems that they would, they find it maybe to be a problem that somebody else is upgrading their systems. There are going to be some flexibility in allowing individual employees to a degree. I mean, we know that it's much safer if it's administered at the level of the, you know, the IT overarching group, in this case, BSSI. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, one of the things we talked extensively about as we were landing on the proposal for managed services was, you know, we can't move everything to the latest and greatest version of software or version of hardware at the same time. So by necessity, and just because we just don't have infinite money to spend on IT, we have to make decisions, just like we prioritize, you know, everything from which streets to pave to, you know, when we need to acquire a new vehicle to, you know, respond to fire runs. We prioritize on IT software and hardware. And there are instances where we're going to have to continue to run legacy systems, and BSSI is going to have to maintain those legacy systems with patches and such. Now, there are times when legacy systems will get beyond the end of their useful life to where that software no longer is being patched, and we understand, and as does BSSI, that that's a discussion we have at those times, that, you know, we may be accepting risk by continuing to operate some of those legacy systems, and we say, okay, we have to accept this risk because we can't allow this thing to end because this is a need, it's a low risk from an external security threat, for instance, and so we're going to go ahead and make a decision, a definitive decision, that we're going to keep this particular piece of hardware or this software running. But, you know, that's an eyes-wide-open, you know, setting, basically, between BSSI and us. So, you know, we're prepared to deal with that.
I believe there's some language in the agreement or the proposed agreement where they mandate that certain things have to be the most recent, in order to be the most secure, so we'll have to work on that language, obviously, because there will be certain cases, at least for a while, where we can't.
Well, and it is true when they accept full responsibility for the security of such things. But if we say, and this is something that resides elsewhere in that document, you know, if we say, "We can't," you know, "We can't," because we can't afford to move to this particular piece of hardware at this time, so, you know, it's understood. And I understand where they're coming from as well.
Right.
I mean, they can't 100% guarantee the security of a thing that no longer is being updated by the company. And so that's, it's understood, then, that, you know, you can't hang that on the vendor, that they're 100% responsible for the security of that device if we say we want to maintain this system that is no longer being supported by the person who makes it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from committee members? Yes, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I was in the meeting last Friday, and hearing from a disinterested third-party, as you referred to him, was very helpful for me in terms of assessing the appropriateness of this contract, of this agreement. And so I am reassured just to have someone who is not either of the parties in that to have answered some of those concerns. I do want to just sort of, I guess, put out there on the record that I think that the city is going to be facing, in addition to this contract, we're going to have more IT expenses in order to be able to move forward with, I think that it's unlikely that there won't be additional expenses incurred for, whether it's software or hardware, in order to make this transition happen. And it is certainly very likely that had we hired, or if we hired, an in-house person, that those same expenses would be incurred, because we, I'm sure, have multiple systems that need some updating, upgrading, and investment. But I think that we should all go into this eyes-wide-open, that this is not a one-price, covers-all-IT expenses for the city. It's not going to necessarily be the end of the need for financial expenditures to maintain, and I think that's probably to be expected in this era. We are so reliant on our technology. But I just, I think that it's important that we're all clear that this isn't going to just pay everything the city needs as far as information technology. And also, I think it's really critical that, I mean, we sort of have a lot of, what is our public-facing information technology comes through the government channel. And I think it's critical that our, whoever is providing the information technology services, that they work closely with our government channel, because we need to be able to maintain both security and our internal systems that the public doesn't see and interact with, but also our very public-facing projects that are seen through the government channel. And so I would ask that there are some meetings between BSSI and Lucas and our government channel staff to be sure that the questions and concerns and needs of the government channel would be adequately addressed through this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grace, I'm glad you brought that up, because I'll give you an example, too, when you said eyes need to be wide open in terms of us, you know, possibly likely having to replace things, that, you know, when the time comes, since technology is spinning so quickly that we do find a replacement for one of our legacy, you know, hardware or software products that we use, that, you know, there's likely to be a cost to onboard that new system, whatever that system is. You know, servers are finicky, and, you know, servers are expensive. So again, you know, there could be a sundry of different things as we're looking forward. But again, I appreciate your comment that, you know, we have to be cognizant of that, that, you know, with technology, like I said, you know, changing as rapidly and as quickly as it is, we could find that there is replacement products for some of the things that we, currently, there is no replacement for it.
Director Stone, I understand that a contract for managed services would have some sort of length of time agreed upon, but can you comment on the reversibility of a city going from our current kind of operation to cloud? Can you go back the other way?
So, to be clear, this particular endeavor is for the management of our environment. You know, I'm not buying, or we are not buying, space on a cloud server somewhere. You know, we're having, you know, basically, rather than have two people sitting in here, you know, running the environment, we're having two, you know, an entity over here that is remoting and managing the environment. You know, should we go and move particular data into a cloud setting? We could certainly always go back and, you know, buy server space and put it internal in-house and then say, okay, we're going to bring that data in. In most cases, I'd probably advise against it for a couple different reasons. Number one, you know, especially if it's an extremely data-intensive thing, where there's a significant public records aspect of that, you know, and the one that comes to mind from the very get-go is body-worn cameras from the police department. You know, one of the reasons we made the decision to go from the beginning to cloud storage with the data from body-worn cameras is because some of the experiences with, you know, some larger communities that went to and adopted body-worn cameras earlier and had their own servers internal where they had that is very, very quickly those filled up. And their ability to continue to maintain the tremendous amount of data that's required to be held because of public records laws, they just simply couldn't do it and, you know, found themselves having significant capital expenses to be able to do that and to manage it. So when we went with body-worn cameras, we went with a company that from the get-go, you know, there's cloud storage. So I would never recommend that, yeah, you know what, hey, guys, send us all our data from the body-worn cameras, and we're going to store it internal. There may be some less data-intensive aspects of city work where that's out in the cloud, and we say, okay, instead, we're going to buy a server and bring it back in. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah.
I guess we crossed that bridge when we came to it.
We can do it, but not advise.
Yeah, depending upon the particular type of data.
Thank you. Other questions, Councilmember Crowell?
Yes, I don't want to drag this on too long, but we did talk at our last meeting on this subject, I think we collectively admitted that we weren't IT experts, and maybe this was, I wasn't at the meeting on Friday, and maybe bringing in this third-party was trying to have that expert at the table. We did talk about having our former CIO kind of chime in on this. Did we contact him or go that route, or we decided to?
I did, I did. I contacted him and spoke with him, and he's supportive. He's willing to come and speak with us if we need to. You know, I probably can give you some more, you know, I'm, you know, I'm cognizant of his personal situation, and I'd rather not.
I understand.
You know, drag him into, back into work.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
And so, but, you know, for the amount of interaction that I had, he's supportive of this.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not from the committee, from our administration?
To Councilmember Crowell's question, it would have been nice had you the time or the ability to attend that meeting on Friday. I know Mr. McCullough, I know him through the Intelligent Communities Forum, and he is quite the expert when it comes to IT, having served as the CIO for the city of Dublin. But also, like I said, my engagements with him over the past six years, you know, he's an extremely knowledgeable person in this space, and I think that the words, you know, his communication with those who could attend is pretty rock-solid.
Thank you. Questions from other council members? And from our audience?
Actually, we have a question, and perhaps we should assume this, but I'm assuming that this company would advise us, to the point that Member Grace mentioned, on new technologies that we would need and, you know, pricing and that sort of thing, so that we can stay on top of it, not just making sure that we're maintaining whatever, but also coming up with new software and hardware as that becomes necessary.
Yes, absolutely. That's 100% included in the nature of the contract. In fact, the sourcing of both hardware and software and the setup, like the imaging of new machines as part of this contract and such, when it comes in, advice on, should we decide, like if there's a piece of software that we think might further city operations, you know, we would run through them, and if they said, yeah, that's something we recommend, or no, we don't recommend it. But, you know, really, they're tailoring their managed services contract based upon the software that we already operate, and, you know, and they're not going to tell us what to do if we say this is something we want. You know, a great example is CMI. You know, we're committed to CMI for our finance software. It's a program that we've used for a very, very long time, and, you know, they fully expect to support our continued use of that as our accounting and utilities billing and software that we use. And so, you know, they would never go and say, well, no, we don't think you should do that, you should do something else. You know, they're going to go with what we're most comfortable with.
Any final questions from audience or council members? Yes, Councilmember Grace?
Just to Member Spielness's comment, the sort of, under the minimum requirements of the statement of work, it's things such as, like, server hardware must be under current warranty coverage, and they have specific minimum requirements that our equipment and software have to meet in order for them to sort of take on this project. And that's one area where I anticipate that the city will have some additional expenses just in order to get our equipment up to their minimum requirement. And I think that's part of what I was referencing with my statement earlier, that we're likely to see some additional expenses, but those expenses are likely some that we would incur or if we heeded the advice of an in-person information officer.
Excellent. Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
Just to comment on Councilmember Grace's comments about warranties, usually, you know, a software warranty is only going to last maybe 12 months at best. Would we then be required to somehow do extended warranties if we didn't want to replace that software, or somehow, some mechanism that keeps the warranty up to date even though it's not the newest software?
Member Reisner, the requirement for warranty coverage is on server hardware.
Yeah.
Not software. But I do recall from our previous meeting that I asked how many of our servers are currently under warranty coverage, and I don't believe we've received an answer to that, because if none of our existing servers meet that, how would we obtain that? I don't know that we would have the capital to replace all of our servers. Or, I don't know what that looks like, just...
Yeah, so part of that will be, you know, tease out in the onboarding process, you know, ultimately. To the point about software warranties, I mean, gone are the days where you buy a software, you install it in your machine, and you no longer have any contact with the company. So, I mean, I think every piece of software that we run internal to the city, there's an ongoing relationship with that company. I think probably one of the decisions we'll have to make, you know, relatively soon, I'd say within the next two years, is matriculating to an Office 365 environment versus, you know, where you buy Microsoft licenses and you have them there. But by and large, the majority of our software is an ongoing relationship with the company, and that warranty, per se, is because you're paying a subscription to a certain extent as opposed to buying the software, letting it reside on your machine.
Thank you. That was our first item, IT network management services, and we have several more, so we'll move from the clouds to the fiber in the ground, and I will ask our director, who's going to be speaking on several of these items, to let us know what this is about.
I'll try to go faster. In 2007, we, really, the mid-2000s, we were notified by GTE at the time that the T1 lines that interconnected our various city buildings were no longer going to be maintained. And so we made a decision in the mid-2000s that we had to do something to recreate and reconstruct the network that interconnects the 15 or so various city buildings around the city. And the decision that we made at that time was to install a microwave point-to-point system. So we now have all of our buildings connected, save one, and I can get into the specifics of the network at some point, you know, in a different session, but with a point-to-point microwave system. That microwave system is reaching the end of its useful life, and we've identified a way to basically interconnect these buildings with fiber in the ground as opposed to replace this microwave, point-to-point microwave system. You know, we can certainly mothball that system and keep it for other uses, but having this fiber in the ground is something that will be very beneficial to the city in keeping our buildings all connected. The ability to then leverage that fiber in the ground for other purposes, you know, for what may come, you know, whether it be economic development or something else, is something that we would consider. And so what we're going to ask would be to do an appropriation of the $500,000 in ARPA funds towards the first few phases of that project to start putting fiber into a lot of the conduit that we already have from previous construction projects, as well as putting in conduit in a few places that it currently doesn't exist.
Great, great. Could you comment on the length of such a project?
I see this being about a five-year endeavor, honestly. This is not something that we can do overnight. You know, I have it right now broken into about six phases, and that's just, you know, based on what I think is the priorities. We may find that once we get a company in here that's capable of doing such installs, that they can go faster than that. I'm certainly hopeful along those lines, but, you know, it's not something that I'm used to doing. It's kind of a specialized thing. You know, I can build you water lines and sewer lines and street paving and bridges all day, but, you know, installing fiber-optic cable and then connecting buildings is something that is a little bit outside of my wheelhouse, so...
Excellent, and I think it's worth mentioning that this is established as a goal of the Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan for Better Fiber, Broadband, and Wi-Fi Access. So with that, I'll open it up to questions from committee members. Yes, Councilmember Grace?
Just a quick comment, and this is something that we have discussed here in council a few different times, and I'm fully in support of using our ARPA funds to upgrade to something that will not only make the city more sustainable going into future, but it will also provide opportunities for businesses and... opportunities for businesses and community members to network eventually.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank?
You mentioned possibly a five-year endeavor. $500,000, will that cover the entire five-year project or a portion of it?
I don't know. I mean, I would be making something up if I told you, Councilmember Swank, today, that $500,000 will be enough, because I'm not done in endeavor like this. I'd like to think that we can get everything in for that amount, but I just don't know.
Okay. Yeah, you know, who knows five years from now, but it will cover a significant portion, I would assume.
I think so, certainly. And I can break down the various phases for you. I don't have that with me today. I've shared it with Councilmember McCary. But, you know, that's something certainly that we're kind of developing at this point.
Great. Mr. Mayor?
You know, and to add to that, you know, one of the things that we have in our favor with this ARPA money is that we've got four years in which to expense the ARPA money, so that'll get us four years in. I agree with Director Stone. You know, some of the things that are on that phase list are replacing a lot of our surveillance cameras, in particular at the Richland Avenue Roundabout and on Court Street, where we have, you know, questionable cameras, you know, in terms of their operability at this point in time, as well as putting together something that would be even more public-facing, which would be having potentially, potentially, you know, Wi-Fi on Court Street that people could access, which I think would be a wonderful feature to have within the city of Athens, especially, you know, during the summer months when the door is going full-tilt and people are experiencing parklets potentially more in the future. But it certainly adds a different dimension to the community that doesn't exist at this point in time. But, you know, with the phases, I think that's the right approach to take, is to phase us across time and have some real wins right off the bat. You know, the city's been intentional, thanks to Director Stone and others, that with every major street project, you know, we were able to put conduit in the ground, which is, you know, ultimately, again, to Director Stone's answer of not knowing exactly what, you know, it's $15.50 per linear foot to bore underground or to trench. And with a lot of the conduit that we currently have that hasn't been threaded with anything yet, that really is going to be helpful in this endeavor to fiberize the city buildings, but also provide public service with some of the other amenities. And, you know, the security cameras on Court Street, you know, in particular, I think, you know, have been a high priority for me as we look forward, and that fits within this phased approach of having fiber up and down our major conduit corridors. As well as, you know, think about it, the resilience of the buildings themselves, of just having something where we're not having to rely on this failing, aging, I should say, aging microwave system that on a, you know, it's wonderful being a Tree City USA unless you're a microwave shot. So, has certainly presented challenges with our microwave shots.
Works better in the winter time.
It works very well in the winter time.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank?
I'm sure this has been mentioned, and I have to apologize for not knowing this figure off the top of my head. But the amount of ARPA money we've received is about how much?
We will receive two tranches. We received the first tranche back in July, I believe, July or August, and that was approximately $1.27 million. And we'll receive the second tranche of our ARPA allocation same time this year. So somewhere in the summertime, July, August timeframe, we'll receive the second tranche. And as I indicated, we have four years in which to expense our ARPA money. You know, we set this up a long time ago with the CARES Act funding that we received, which was approximately $1.5 million, to where all expenditures associated with, you know, the coronavirus funding that we received goes before council for authorization as we move forward. And that's an accountancy, good accountancy practice as a community, to where it goes through council.
Do we know how much that allocation will be this July?
It'll be the same, the same as it was in 2021.
1.27?
1.2, approximately 1.27.
Okay, great.
Give or take. I can get you that actual figure if you-
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowley?
Thank you, Member McCary. City Administration provided some information the last time we spoke about this, that approximately six to seven miles of conduit had been put in, which you just mentioned. Do we have any idea what percentage that is of all of the conduit we will need?
You know, we've been exploring kind of the map and what this looks like. And I'll keep this really brief. You know, we have, some of our longer reaches are going to be Fire Station 2. Some of it's going to be our traffic control boxes out east State Street. So, you know, this is purely a guess, Member Crowley, in terms of the amount, but I did share the mileage of the miles of conduit, which includes the most recent, well, nearly the most recent add, which is the conduit that runs basically from West State Street ball fields all the way to the Stimson Avenue Roundabout. There are some areas where we know that we'd have to trench, but I think there's some assets that the city has that are favorable for us being able to do that, most notably the run that would go from the Stimson Avenue Roundabout to the wastewater treatment plant. And there, we could use the right-of-way along the bike path to do some trenching and not disturb the bike path, but to be able to access it that way. And once we get there, we hop back onto the conduit, and then it runs down east State Street. Now, if we wanted to extend further down east State Street, that would require, you know, having to get creative as we went, you know, I'm saying way further east. But, you know, Stimson Avenue has conduit now, as does the, a good portion of Mill Street. As a matter of fact, Mill Street from Court Street all the way down to 1804 Way, you know, has conduit. So, it's interesting, because we have kind of a level of redundancy, or creating in the future potentially loops with our fiber system if we choose to. So, again, that falls back into Director Stone's comment about phasing it, you know, as we start migrating through and threading the fiber and getting things set up, we may see that we have similar opportunities, or we may have some other ISPs that come to us and say, hey, you know, what's the possibility of jumping on your fiber? Or, you know, there's a multitude of things that could happen, you know, could we allow for co-location within our conduit as well, to where someone, an ISP feels there's a need to jump inside, or a desire?
So existing conduits, half, is a quarter, 10%, 75%? Any idea?
You know, in looking at it, I would probably say-
I'd say we're 75% to connect our buildings right now.
Excellent.
Now, for ultimate goals down the future, to be able to, you know, provide space where we could leverage it for economic development, you know, the sky's the limit ultimately. But to be able to connect our buildings, I think we have conduit to about 75% of the buildings that we need to interconnect.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are still taking questions about this potential allocation of ARPA American Rescue Plan funds for the fiber. Anyone from, who's not on the committee, council members, questions, comments? And from the audience? Okay, we will, oh, yes.
Would any of this be used for-
Oh, do you need to, I need to invite you to approach the podium for formal documentation of your presence here, and if you wouldn't mind, please sharing your name and your local address.
Sure. Jordan Pazell, 61 Franklin Avenue. Would any of this fiber be actually used for, like, resident access to internet? Could any of it be used for a, rather than like corporate ISPs, could it be used for, you know, city internet access to make it more affordable?
Thank you for asking. It's my understanding that we will eventually reach a phase where public Wi-Fi might be accessible on Court Street, which would include some residencies. But Director Stone, do you have any additional comments?
This project is specifically to interconnect city buildings so that the city network for, you know, internally facing things are connected. The amount of space, though, on the fiber that's going to go in the ground far exceeds what is necessary for city operations. It is not our intent at this moment to do some sort of public internet service providing effort, other than some public Wi-Fi in the central business district. You know, the state legislature has made it very, very difficult for municipalities or local government to be an internet service provider. That's just not something that Ohio has made easy to do. As far as sharing space on the fiber with multiple internet service providers, such that competition increased, beyond the kind of monopoly that comes with a lot of small communities with one provider or another, that is something that I could see probably in several years from now happening. Hopefully, that answers your question. Yeah.
Thank you for that question. Absolutely. All right, we need to move to our third agenda item, which I think will be a little more succinct, because we've done this regularly. This is an intra-county mutual aid agreement with the Athens County Sheriff's Office, and it's our understanding that we enter these kinds of agreements for law enforcement to provide assistance when needed. And I wonder if we have just a few remarks from Director Stone?
Sure. The Sheriff's Department approached the city several years ago, and at that time, it didn't move. In the meantime, the police chief has looked at it. The Sheriff's Department reached out here recently and said, hey, would you consider this again? And ultimately, you know, for us to go outside of the city limits and support the Sheriff's Department, this lays out kind of the, you know, roles and responsibilities of East Agency, when our law enforcement officers would go outside of the city limits to support the Sheriff's Department in a situation. So, pretty common that we do this, you know, in order to not have cross-districtal problems. And so we, both Chief Pyle and Director Eliason have stated that this is something that we ought to do.
So this is a request to enter that agreement?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
How many years could we do this for, or is this something we'd have to renew on an annual basis?
Yeah, that's a great question, Member Swank. I think it is a three-year, but I will get you that answer. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't think this is an annual one.
I'd hope not. The second question has to deal with when we might need mutual aid, and the weekend I think of is Halloween. Would this preclude us from having to hire the Sheriff's Department to support us on that weekend as we currently do?
Well, we actually don't hire the Sheriff's Department. They provide, for the support that they provide, it's, you know, as a county, as part of Athens County, you know, we pay taxes, and then those taxes pay for the Sheriff's Department. And what the Sheriff's Department can spare during that weekend, they provide to us, just because of their law enforcement role for Athens County. We have historically hired, you know, off-duty officers from agencies outside that we didn't have a mutual aid agreement, particularly in specialized needs. So like, the one that comes to mind specifically is Mounted, and we'll pay, you know, a rate associated with Mounted Forces to come in. But in many cases, the support that we get from either the county or the state comes because we already pay those taxes to pay for that law enforcement service. So, for instance, all the Highway Patrol Special Response Team that comes, that's not a cost borne by the city when they come in. They come in because they've recognized that that's a, you know, a need in the state of Ohio during that particular weekend.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Grace?
I just wanted to add to the discussion that the term of this agreement shall be for four years, and it will automatically renew for an additional four years unless either party provides written notice to the other party not less than 90 days prior to the end of the initial term. But it wishes to terminate.
Yes, thank you for that detail. Other questions from council or committee members? Additional council members? And questions from the audience on this item, mutual aid agreement? Okay, we'll move to our fourth item. We've heard about our Athens Fire Department Headquarters and its need for ongoing repairs. We have identified an additional need that would call for us to amend 0-8421. I will turn things over to Director Stone for comment.
Right. So, you know, previously, we put money in place to do an emergency repair to the current Headquarters building. As the contractor has gotten in and started doing that work, they found more failing components and identified an additional beam and column that needs to be installed. Right now, we've identified an additional $6,000 in cost, and that's actually reflected later on with an appropriation under Finance and Personnel request into the TC500s of the General Fund Fire Department TC500s. This will push me above $50,000, which requires council authorization for an expenditure. And so this amendment authorizes the Service Safety Director to expend more money in order to do these repairs. And I wish I could tell you that this $6,000 is definitively going to do it, and we're not going to have any other structural issues after that. But my fear is that, you know, it's one of those things that as you get into it, you find more and more and more problems.
Of course, this is for the safety of our personnel and our equipment, so this is an important piece. Any questions from committee members?
If you had all the money today, which, this is a committee, so we're not voting on it today, but if you had all the money today, how quickly could we make this repair?
It's not a function of cash. It's a function of availability of steel and the speed that the contractor can move. Now, Gooden Builders is the one that is doing the work, and they are onsite working, so it's not as though we're waiting for them. I don't have an answer to say, you know, they can source that steel and then get that work done. You know, I see this work completing within the next month. You know, I mean, that's a reasonable amount of time, given that they've mobilized already and that they're working. So I don't see this being something that persists, you know, well into the spring and summer, but it's not something I think that they can do in a week, so.
Could you clarify whether this new repair need emerged from an additional assessment that we requested, or was discovered in the process of other repairs?
Well, in the process of other repairs, ultimately. You get a bundle there, and you start removing concrete and start placing the steel, and, you know, more stuff falls out. And they, you know, you've seen the video, that, you know, when it moves. And so right now, we've got a section of the ramp where we're not moving apparatus across. You know, we've kind of got that blocked off. And from a fire response perspective, we're still okay. We do have some contingency plans right now that I'm working with the chief on, either lease or borrowing of indoor storage space for apparatus that is not, that's not run as frequently. If that particular apparatus was necessary for a response, that would decrease our, or increase our response time. The thing that comes to mind is the heavy rescue truck that we have in there. That's got a lot of the structural collapse equipment on it. That's something that we don't use very frequently, but if you need it, you need it. It sits in the Headquarters right now. It's a very heavy truck. You know, it may be that we pull that out and stick that into, you know, storage somewhere else, if it gets to the point that, you know, a portion of that ramp is just not safe to drive across. But I'd like to think that we can get this repaired then, quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank?
Since they're onsite and making the assumption that perhaps we could get the steel, and you'd like to do this within the month, would you recommend next Monday that we operate under a suspension of the rules to get this passed and in your hands as quickly as possible?
I'm sure my fire chief would ask for that. So, yeah. Faster is always better, but I'm always hesitant, and I understand the desire of council not to move things under suspension when at all possible.
But with the contractor onsite, we know it's a lot less expensive than having them leave and then come back again.
Sure, sure. He hasn't billed me at all yet. He waits till he has to bill.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from other committee members? Other council members? Audience members? Excellent. While we are still talking about fire departments, we'll move on to, private fire department, we'll move on to question of the new construction for a Headquarters design, and I will again turn things over to Director Stone.
Okay, this is a request for an authorization to expend up to $70,000 and an additional appropriation of $40,000 for AFD Headquarters Design, which is Project 346. We have McCall Architects, which is the primary consultant, and then there's a subconsultant engineering firm that's working for them as well, Wuppert. But ultimately, McCall is the company that we've hired to do the design, and this is the Stage One Design Services. We started with $30,000 out of 2021's budget to get them moving. The ultimate cost for the Stage One design is about $67,000, so I'm asking for authorization of up to $70,000, and I would need an appropriation of additional $40,000. Of note, while we're talking about it, on the 19th, there's a public meeting that's going to take place at the Community Center to talk about concepts, public concerns, and ideas associated with the Fire Station Headquarters replacement. And so that's in the evening from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. But ultimately, this is to round out the remainder of the Stage One Design work that McCall Architects are doing for the project.
Thank you. And I believe the 19th is Wednesday of next week. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and I can note that council members have received comments from community members about some of those community concerns that can be addressed at that forum, did you call it?
It's it's a it's an open house.
Open house.
Ultimately, it's an opportunity for both city officials and the design team to hear from members of the public, both ideas and concerns about the project.
Thank you. And as a preview, I understand that common concerns that have been raised are about green space, floodplains, and noise. Are there additional topics that you already anticipate being community concerns with this?
Well, I mean, the footprint of the of the project is part of it, understanding kind of what it's going to look like, and ideas of what it could look like, the space needs, as well as amenities that would be above and beyond the needs of just for the fire, fire personnel and the fire apparatus. So, you know, what aspects of the project could provide a an amenity to the community that could really make it a true community asset and not just a cloistered public safety building?
Thank you. Questions from council members?
Sam?
Yes, Director, it's not Director Crowell, it's Councilmember Crowell.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mayor McKay. I just wanted to, you've already mentioned communications from citizens. We did have a third ward citizen email all of City Council, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody, Mrs. McCosker provided a lot of very helpful links in there. And so if you could take a special, close look at that in in terms of community health and and climate adaptation, I certainly would appreciate it. And I know this this project is sort of between Ward Four and Ward Three, and there's a lot of people that are impacted by it. So I just wanted to acknowledge that communication. Thank you, Mayor McKay.
Thank you. And we are operating under the assumption that this design would be for a specific location that's already been designated, not an option of.
Correct.
Locations, thank you. Okay, and that would be along Stimson Avenue. Thank you. Questions from other committee members?
Question from Ward Four. Since we're going to this meeting next Wednesday, that's close, 10 days, nine days, do we have at this point in time any kind of a diagram? Because one of the things that's popping up in terms of the discussion about this is where it's going to be specifically on that property and how much space it's going to take up. Do we have anywhere, is it on our website? Because I think that would aid in some of the conversations that are taking place and straighten out some of the misinformation that's beginning to circulate.
Sure. There is a, there are visual aids that we will use at the meeting that will be prepared within the next week. McCall Architects is putting those together right now. You know, one of the things that, you know, we looked at a 20,000-square-foot facility, you know, as a plus or minus as far as the the amount of space necessary to carry the apparatus, and then there's a second story for for sleeping quarters and such.
Is there a pole?
Yeah, a pole. A pole is absolutely essential. You know, they, I told McCall that they, we weren't hiring them if they didn't specify a pole.
And a dalmatian.
So, the the, and then you have the space outside to be able to, you know, maneuver the the vehicles. And so, you know, a footprint of what a 20,000-square-foot facility plus the external space to be able to to move apparatus outside and and and, you know, employee parking area and that sort of thing will will, it it won't be the design, but it would be a a template of what, how much that would look like, and it will be able to be plopped down on an aerial photo to show, you know, kind of where that would sit. I think some of the misinformation to your to your point is that it's going to consume all of the space there in that in that green area there off of Stimson Avenue, and that's just not the case. I mean, really, this is going to be snugged up against Stimson Avenue for the for the need, and we wanted to because the the purpose of choosing that location is access to Stimson Avenue and access to the US 33 and 50 interchange that's nearby so that we can provide the fastest response to the most portions of the city possible. I mean, that's, that is the number one reason by and large that that location is selected is because of ability to to reach the city. I mean, if you're going to have one fire headquarters, and that's what you have, we can't afford to have, you know, three or four or five different fire stations around the city and man them. You got to have one main one that can reach the majority of the city in the fastest time, and that's the reason for selecting that site.
Thank you. Yes, President Nisley?
Just to put this in the larger perspective, so we passed the resolution and the ordinance in December, and that then sends that information from those ordinances on the wording on the levy to the Board of Elections, and that's under review by the Board of Elections now. We're going through this design phase and the public hearing and getting public response to it. And then what would happen is that it would be, it will be placed on the May ballot for citizens to to decide on the levy. So that's kind of where we are in the process.
I appreciate that, and the importance of drawing a distinction between the levy being approved by voters and the specific location being approved. Can you talk about the distinction there?
Well, I mean, the the levy is whether or not we're going to have enough money to be able to build it. It's not a levy about spot. If levy fails, I mean, I'll be brutally honest, I I don't know what we're going to do. We will, we will go to a, you know, we'll probably have to go and and find some sort of leased space to hold the fire apparatus, and we're going to have a a challenge, you know, when the when the time comes, if it if that were to be the case. But I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just telling you that that's that's the the reality of what will will occur, given the what we just talked about on the previous item, which is the the fire station headquarters reaching the end of its useful life.
Thank you. Questions from other committee members? Councilmember Grace?
Just briefly, since we're talking about the location and and the public meeting, this is, this is not a new topic here in the city as far as needing a new fire station or the possible locations for, and and a a pretty involved study was done some years ago to look at different possible sites, and and it was, it was determined that this really was the best location in order to adequately serve the residents of the city in 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 the best possible manner as far as safety and being able to reach residents and access for the fire trucks. And so, just to to remind us that that this isn't, this isn't a recent thought that that someone has had, it's it's something that's already undergone quite a bit of of review, and I'm looking forward to seeing the the site plans and and design that's coming up next week.
There'll be a second public meeting in the end of March as well. So basically, the idea is to take feedback, you know, ideas on amenities, concerns into consideration, try to go back, do more conceptual design, and and have a real good, you know, second, second, second look, basically, by members of the public so they can see, you know, what the architects have done at the end of March.
You know, just to to share an example, that some of you were on council at the time when we had the multiple open houses, you know, public hearings, there were open houses really, when we were looking at the design for the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway as well, to where the citizens were able to weigh in on on a multitude of things to include some of the aesthetics, which was kind of an interesting process as well. So, this will be very similar, as Director Stone just indicated, that it's a process. I I do want to share too, you know, once this clears through the Board of Elections and we've gotten the, have the green light to have this go before the citizens in May, once we get to that point, city employees, other than giving facts to the public, they are to, and I've already instructed them all that they are to be silent in terms of, should I vote for this or not, kind of a thing? You know, that's where we as elected, if someone were to ask us as elected officials, we can certainly say, you know, whether to vote for it or not. But when it comes to the city employees, to include the fire chief or any firefighters, they need to remain, you know, silent basically on whether or not to vote for this particular levy. So just, it's an educational moment for everybody.
Thank you, and I know community members have appreciated frequently asked questions, documents, and resources in the past on similar issues. Is that something we would be able to create based on some of the questions that come up during the open houses?
Absolutely.
Excellent, thanks. Questions from other council members? Questions from the audience? Yes, please approach the podium, share your name and your local address, please.
My name is Brian Goodman, R-H-Y-A-N, and I live at 97 South Green Drive. I've been working with Chief Reimer about staffing issues with the Athens Fire Department and some of those issues, but I just wanted to recommend that we start looking to plan forward for fire departments. I know he shared with me a report that was produced before I was even born, saying that Athens should have five fire departments, or fire stations, to be clear. And currently, we only have on the two that are mainly running us, and I just want to make sure that we're kind of planning forward instead of waiting 60 years on a station that's falling apart and putting people in danger. So maybe as part of that process, working with that same company to try to come up with different ideas or designs that allow us to grow rather than just replacing issue after issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Director Stone, can you comment at all on any future long-term needs that you're already aware of regarding fire services in Athens?
Probably, you know, if if I had to pick a third location, it would be in the west, northwest portion of the city. You know, there is a railroad track across 682 that divides the community. Now, there's not that many people north of those railroad tracks, but when you look at communities and how they lay out fire stations, and and they look at response time, and and really, the the area north of those railroad tracks, University Estates, the new development that's going to take place on the other side of 682, you know, that's an area probably in the 15 years in the future, 20 years in the future, really, we probably ought to start looking at. I also think there's probably some potential for growth in the southwest portion of the city. You know, if you look at the ridges, and specifically the ridges Tier Two land, you know, that's an area where I see development happening, you know, 20 years out. We do have Station Two that's south of the river. If you kind of go back in history as to why there's a station down there, I mean, there used to be a railroad that cut the city right in half, and so having a a station on the south side of the city and a station on the north side of the city made a lot of sense. That railroad doesn't exist anymore. However, there is a river, and, you know, from time to time, the river does sudden flood. So there is value in having that Station Two down there on on the south side. So really, looking at coverage, that would be, that would be one direction, that kind of northwest area. I don't see us growing any further to the east, but simply because we're getting downstream of our wastewater plant a lot, there's a lot of floodplain, you know, further, further, further east. But I don't want to speak, you know, too much more about what growth would look like. I'd refer you to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and and I think there may be some things in there even about potential future locations if we were to expand and grow significantly and have the the income tax revenue necessary to pay for said additional fire stations as well.
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to our penultimate item for the City and Safety Services Committee, we've got Athens Parks and Recreation, a new restroom facility facility at the West State Park. And I'll turn it back to Director Stone.
Very quickly, Director Jordan, for Arts Parks and Recreation is working with a a prefab concrete building company at at putting a restroom facility, an expanded restroom facility at the West State Street Park. She's got an estimate right now of $140,000 for the prefab facility. Basically, it's it's built off-site and then brought in, and then, you know, probably an extra $70,000 or so for site prep and, you know, final installation and connection. It sounds like a lot for a restroom, and I thought it was a lot for a restroom, but when you look at the costs of some of the public facilities that have gone recently in this area, particularly with the Bailey's Trails, it's really not out of line. And you're talking about commercial-grade stuff, you know, this isn't a, you know, like your porcelain thing that's in your bathroom at your house, this is something that can experience the wear and tear. Additionally, it is, it is got some some floodplain development stuff that has to occur in order to be able to build it, but that's, that's what that we're asking for is an appropriation in order to get that installed here in the summer.
Thank you, and I know in our Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we call for more gender-neutral and gender-inclusive restrooms. I believe this can be addressed with the construction of this new restroom facility. Could you comment on that?
What she's looked at right now and has gotten estimated is is four family restrooms that are large enough for, you know, to be signed as such, both male, female, family, gender-neutral restrooms with individual locks on them, large enough to be able to accommodate wheelchairs and, you know, to meet ADA requirements, as well as all of them to have urinals in them, and the reason for that is for cleanliness. You know, we see that as as something that will really cut down on on filth ultimately by having those included. So that's kind of the the template right now.
Thank you. Questions from committee members about restroom construction?
Where will this be located?
The expanded parking lot there in the West State Street Field, there on the north side of West State Street, about just equidistant from from the two sides of it, maybe a little bit more west, just north of it.
So that'll be definitely a safety improvement. People won't be crossing the street to go to the old restroom over there.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are spending some effort here this winter in putting a kind of a facelift on the existing restroom as well. So it's not going to be in, to replace the existing restroom, it's going to augment that existing restroom.
Currently, sandlot, as a lot of you know, you know, they have, you know, porta-johns, portlets that that are sitting in the parking lot. This will be a much more centralized location. It'll be right behind Fenway Park. But, you know, as we've explored this, you know, for for years, you know, it was knowing full well that the volume of of attendees during sandlot and other events, and hopefully, you know, we will, at some point in the future, have, you know, other sports activities taking place down in West State Street Park and retain the current bathroom with renovation to cater more to the Dalton Field and east portion of that area, and then these new restrooms taking up the, basically, the ball fields, the shelter house, everything else that's on the west end of the park.
So, second question deals with safety and security. Will the restrooms be open on a similar time schedule to what we have down at the soccer fields on East State Street? We generally close those up sometime late October, early November. And then the second part is, and I hate to say this, but it's a reality unfortunately with park restrooms, what kind of provisions are we going to have to protect these so that they're not subject to damage, destruction, and vandalism after hours?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, you know, ultimately, you can't man the restrooms, so we're not going to put a person there, and certainly, we're not going to put cameras inside the restrooms, probably cameras in the external area, particularly as we have a nicer facility there, that's something that we'll want to make a point to to do, is is as we expand our camera system, have cameras so that if there was a vandalism instance, if you can't stop it from happening, you can at least maybe catch the culprit. You know, with with regards to opening and closing, you know, that's a decision that we have to make as a city as to whether we're not, we're going to heat them. You know, we've, we've kind of been, we've looked at in recent years, and and the cost associated with heating restroom for very low use, when it may or may not work during those real hard, cold winter months, is something that, you know, we've basically said, ah, we're not going to do that, we're going to go ahead and winterize these, take them offline, given that they're not going to be used very much. You know, this new facility, we might be able to use it a lot longer and still, you know, maybe shut it off for a couple months, but otherwise, with some, a low amount of heat, use it for a longer period.
Other questions from committee members? Fellow council members? And audience members? All right, we will proceed to our final agenda item for this committee. Water treatment plant needs some softening salt, so Director Stone, any comments on this?
Yes, this is just an annual authorization. It's always part of the budget, but because it's greater than $50,000, the council has to authorize that expenditure, so that's what we're asking for. Prices on water softening salt don't fluctuate the way that road salt does, so it's it's pretty standard from year to year.
Questions from committee members? And fellow council members? And audience members? Thank you very much. This concludes our very long City and Safety Services Committee meeting.
Okay, we'll now move on to Finance and Personnel, and that's chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Ziff, and Spieldness.
I received this letter about from Ward One person concerned about sidewalks and whatnot. I got that this afternoon. I'll try to address you.
And and we can work with administration.
I want to make sure I'm being proper here. So I know that she sent it along. Is because it is a safety issue, I just bring this up in council meeting, or how is this going to address?
You could bring it up under Communications next week.
Okay.
And then we can, as needed, you know, forward it. We'll also make the administration aware of the comments to to see.
Yeah, it's a little bit more complicated than just something being broken, but.
Right, okay, great. Thank you for letting it, making us aware of it.
No, we have two items here at the beginning that we are going to rely on Director Stone. Once again, let's start with the police contract, the re-opener. Director Stone?
The last year was the normal negotiation. The, last year was the normal negotiating year for the police contract, you know, with the various, the four different unions that we have in the city, we tend to sit on an annual, three-year rotational schedule, and then we have the code union that kind of filters in, in between one of those other, other years with the three larger units. Last year, when I was gone for military duty, Chief Pyle, in his role as interim service safety director, negotiated a one-year contract with reopeners in the second and third year for, for wages, and then in the third year for wages in healthcare. We sat down to renegotiate this contract this year, based upon guidance from this body, as well as, you know, various parts of the administration, we landed on a contract that goes ahead and closes the contract, so we don't have a re-opener in the third year as well, that maintains healthcare in its current status, does a two-and-a-half percent raise for this year, a 2.25% raise for next year, and then, and this is a, the second item on finance and personnel, but it's a separate ordinance because the re-opener didn't speak to this, and it's a one-time payment of $1,000 for each member of the bargaining unit as a retention payment, paid upon ratification and passage, that has a two-year clawback provision included in it. Basically, the clawback provision is for the term, the remainder of the term of the contract, that if a member of any of the segments of this bargaining unit were to leave, for other than disability or retirement, that that money would get sucked back to the, to the city. So, those two, these two, while they're separate, requests for separate ordinances, they kind of go together, because they were, happened there at the re-opener negotiations.
Thank you, Director Stone. Any comments from committee members on either of the first two items, the police contract, reopening it, the re-opener, or this one-time retention payment? Yes, please.
Yes. How does this compare to comparable cities in terms of what our police officers are making now, and how does this raise compare to other cities?
It's in line with what's happening, what we're seeing right now across Ohio with, with raises. You know, we're somewhat unique in that, you know, we're a department that pays relatively well for the area, not necessarily relatively well for the state. So, when you get into the major metropolitan areas, what ends up happening is, for safety services in particular, they kind of compete with one another, and because it's easy to move across jurisdictional boundaries, and, and, you know, you know, Columbus can hire away from Dublin, can hire away from Arlington, you know, and the same thing happens in northeast Ohio. We don't quite have that problem in this particular area, but, but when you look at the three agencies that compete with officers, or four officers, it's Ohio University, Athens County Sheriff's Department, and City of Athens, and we're, you know, we're, we're right in line, basically, with those, those three agencies.
In conjunction with that, what is our turnover and retention compared to other comparable cities?
So, you know, when we look at the folks who leave, we don't have a lot of people who leave to go find another job. We do lose people to Ohio University from time to time, you know, in most cases, because they have a child, that is potentially of college age, and that, that tuition for employees dependents is a, is a heck of a, heck of a benefit, that simply we can't, we can't provide. We have lost some folks to Columbus in the past, and the Central Ohioers in the past, but in many cases, it's due to, due to them perhaps wanting to move anyway. So it's not, it's not a major issue where we're getting people poached left and right, but from time to time, we do lose people.
Well, with the labor issues as they have been, I would just want to make sure that we are on target.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And what we're finding is, you know, in the, in, it's, it's hard to hire police officers right now, you know, across the country, it's something that, there's just less people interested in law enforcement, and, and, you know, I think that the, the national mood is part of that, and so, you know, in the past, we really, really had our pick of the litter when it came to applicants for law enforcement in this part of the state, because, you know, we were, we were one of the better-paying agencies and a good place to work as well. You know, we've got a good environment, we've got a good chief, we've got good leadership in, in our department, and we're just not getting applicants, as far as the numbers, the quantities. Now, we still have some high-quality applicants, we have a pool right now that we have in place, and we're getting to the, to the final stages of that. We've instituted a citizen advisory group to advise the chief and I when it comes to making sure that incoming officers are fit with our community, you know, and, and so that, that, they're, you know, they're part of that, that final interview with the chief and I, so that, you know, there's not a red flag that comes up and goes, "Hey, this person isn't going to fit with our community." But it's a, it's a smaller quantity of applicants than it has been in the past.
Thank you, Director Stone, appreciate it.
Thank you, good question. Other members, yes, Members Ziff?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I had a question about the, the one-time retention payment. Is that something that would go in, I mean, would that become, you said it's, there's a two-year clawback period on it, depending on if they've left for the wrong reasons, for the contract. Is that the kind of thing, would we then see that going in to future contracts, so like every, this isn't the kind of thing, like every two years, they'd get a bonus, that they would, this is just a one-time, one-off?
Correct, yeah, this is absolutely not part of the contract.
All right, cool, thank you.
Other questions on these two items, other members of council? Yes, Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowell. Director Stone, if you could just clarify what, if any, criteria are required for someone to qualify for that retention? Like, would new hires that are currently interviewing, like what, what parameters?
These will be people on, on, on the force as part of the bargaining units ultimately, so probationary employees wouldn't count either, so, because they're not into the bargaining units yet, at the time that, that this has passed.
Okay, thank you.
Administration, any additional comments? Yes, I'll direct.
Kind of quick, I, I know you've said this before, but what are the annual raises going to be, what percentage is?
2.5% for the first year, and 2.25% for the second.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, and I assume this was, Members Ziff mentioned this, but there will be wording in this agreement for the retention payout, that this is no way meant to set a precedent?
Correct, yeah, it's external to the contract, it doesn't, it doesn't sit into the contract at all.
And, can I ask you this, but police officers are on probation for a year as opposed to six months, like other employees?
I don't have the contract with me right now, so I don't know that for a fact, but I, that sounds correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure, it's been like that. So are you going to hold to that probation thing, or, well, that's something you might, I guess, you could find out. Well, you said new employees who are on probation wouldn't qualify.
Well, this is a, this is an agreement with the union, so, and a, and a probationary employee is not a member yet of the, of the union.
So it would, okay, thanks.
Okay, members of the audience, any, yes, please approach.
Jordan Pazola, 61 Franklin Avenue. I think we should be using city funds for supporting residents and infrastructure rather than giving bonuses to cops. We already spend millions of dollars a year on them, and I don't think we need to be giving them a bonus especially. Please spend it on social services, actually provide for people's needs, and that have been shown to reduce crime rates, rather than cops who violently respond to it. That's all.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Okay, we will move on to the next item, which is the Ohio Police and Firefighter Pension Fund. We have discussed a resolution to oppose the increase of the employer contribution to the Ohio Police and Firefighter Pension Fund, some additional research done by the city administration and others. We don't believe that this resolution is necessary at this time. It will not be my recommendation to bring this forward at this time, a resolution which opposes this pension fund increase. There's a lot of research that still needs to be done on this issue. I'm very pleased, the prior item, we are looking in the City of Athens to provide some incentive of retention here for our, our police, and of course, I fully support our police and fire and our safety services, and, and, and want to support them. I looked into the sponsors of House Bill 512, which, which is where this recommendation at the state level has come, and their main, their main argument is that this is the time for this because municipalities are in such a strong financial position. I find that, contrary to, to my experience on city council over the last two years, we are fortunate to have federal monies to plug holes in our revenue shortcomings, specifically, certainly in the garbage fund, and as well as recreation, and I would not characterize the city financial position at this time as being a very strong position that we should be funding the Ohio Police and Firefighter Pension at a higher rate. But, as I said, I believe that the Ohio Municipal League is doing additional research, it was their recommendation that municipalities oppose this, this increase, and at this time, I don't think that we should be responding because I believe that this bill will be changing. Comments from the committee, yes, Member Eisner?
Yeah, I agree with part of what you're saying, that the city finances really aren't in the best of shape, I would say that we need to put more money into the pension fund, but on the other hand, looking through the, the bill itself, the increase has come in increments over five, six years, so it's not a hit of a quarter of a million dollars the first year, it, it's an incremental thing, so it's like, what will our budget be five or six years from now? I mean, yes, we could still be in serious financial difficulties, or we, we may not be, I mean, we don't know what the future is. What we do know is that the, the pension fund is in trouble. It, see how to describe it, we have a situation where people are living longer, and they're retiring earlier. Consequently, and it's, it's a horrible thing to say, but the, the people who are surviving longer are taking more money out of the pension funds than 50 years ago when these things were set up. The actuarial tables say, "Well, they're not going to really live that long, so they're not going to take that much out." Well, that's not true anymore. And also, the, the amounts, because they're based upon salaries and things, have, have increased. But I, I don't think the council itself needs to put out a, a resolution opposing this. I mean, if the administration wants to write a letter to the state legislature and say, "We don't like it," fine, if the auditor wants to, that's, that's fine, but I don't see how council itself writing something to oppose this is really going to do, make much difference, because frankly, this bill's going to pass. I mean, there's nothing we're going to do really to stop this thing, it's going to happen. And so, what I believe we should be doing is saying, "Okay, the inevitable, the wave is going to hit us, how are we going to respond? How can we come up with the monies to make this thing work?" What I'm confused about in some of the language here, I hate to go on like this, but I started reading this, and it's, it's really fascinating, I just love the way people write laws. It goes into this little thing on the second page, paragraph B, line 34. "The taxing authority of each municipal corporation in which there was a police relief and pension fund on October the 1st, 1965 shall annually..." "Shall," okay, there's no choice there, that word is "shall." "...in a manner provided for making other municipal levies in addition to all other levies authorized by law levy a tax of three-tenths of one mil upon all the real and personal property as listed for taxation in the municipal corporation for the purpose of paying the police officer, fire officers, and so on." I requested from the clerk of, of council, a history of, of how the city has been paying the pension funds, and when did we start? And I believe the, the best that the clerk could come up with was something that, that was written, Ordinance 015793, which just states, and this is, this is interesting, "This ordinance authorizes the city to pick up the statutory required contributions to the public employees' retirement system of Ohio for all non-union employees and all elected officials, and to the police and fireman disability and pension funds for the chiefs and captains of the fire and police department." That doesn't even cover most of the employees that are involved in the pension funds. So, I like, I like to know where our statutory, our legal authority has come from to contribute to the pension funds. When did we, as a city, start paying into these funds? Was it in, you know, 1965? And if it was, then this law would then say that we have to, we'd be mandated to establish a property tax. Now, if we didn't have a pension plan or fund contributions before that, we'd be okay. We wouldn't have to levy a tax. It would just be like, the auditor reminded me that we're currently paying our contributions out of the general fund. That, that's right, right? Okay. And as far as I know, we don't have a property tax in the city, at least not a direct one, we get some from the county, you know, they take it back a little bit, but, so there's a lot of confusion with, right here, so I just don't think we're ready to write any type of protest, or, or even a resolution in favor of it. This thing's very confusing to me.
Thank you, Member Eisner, I, I would agree, it's a very complicated issue, I appreciate the historical sort of look. I would say that the part of the way the system works is for a resolution, an official statement of support or opposition from a city council, so that the state government knows what the municipalities are saying throughout the state, that it is part of the process, and just to say, "It's going to pass anyway," you know, I, I think we should make our voice heard, whether we think it's going to pass or it's not going to pass. I will say that, you know, you mentioned that the fund hasn't been doing well. If you watch the press release of the executive director of the Ohio Police and Firefighter Pension Fund with the two sponsoring, sponsors of the bill, there's some contradictory information that goes on, because while she says that we can't have, we can't use a crystal ball to see the future, that's basically what they're, she's basing this increase on, is that looking at the future, they're not going to reach the 8% returns, which they have factored into their calculations. And so, and they think that if it's 7.5 or 7.75, they're going to need extra monies in order to make up that. And I think it's interesting that, that the Ohio Public Employees Opers projects at 7.2% instead of the 8%, and they have exceeded that. You know, I find, there's some information that maybe Director Stone can reply to, your property tax issue, is that I, I believe that there are property tax internal mills that go towards police and fire, and that, that those could be increased to pay for this, Director Stone, is that, I mean, one way to?
So there's property tax money that goes into the general fund of the city, and then we use the general fund, now pay for things, but then there's also those inside mills that, there's a state law that, that says inside mills, the property taxes across, throughout the state, will go to, to, specifically to the police and fire pension fund, and that's a 1965 law, from what I understand. I don't have all the details on that, I know that they'll have like Safety Directors Association, which I'm a member, is kind of researching that, and providing that as an alternative mechanism, as opposed to just passing those costs on to local government, which is what this initial proposal of House Bill 512 proceeds to do. And, you know, and I would contend, that's probably, you know, that may be appropriate to try to do it that way, if you have property taxes that go across the entire state of Ohio, as opposed to, as opposed to specific local governments, you know, to go and do their employer's share. You know, an example is our, our fire department, is the premier fire department in southeast Ohio for... Ohio for technical rescue. So if somebody goes off of the trail in the Bailey's, the Bailey's mountain bike system, mountain bike trail system, and is stuck down in a crevasse, and needs to get extracted from that, our fire department will be the one that's called, because of the interstate mutual aid structure that the Ohio Fire Chiefs have had in place for a long time. So, you know, to say that local governments should be the only ones to carry the cost when, while they primarily serve the city of Athens, but then extend services beyond the city of Athens from time to time, I think is probably appropriate, that it goes beyond a city of Athens to carry the cost of some of the additional demands on the Ohio Police and Fire Pensions Fund.
I feel that, you know, especially given the stated argument that the time is good now because of the strong position of municipalities, even if we are considered a strong position, it is because of the funding we've received from the federal government right now. That is obviously, as we all know, not going to last forever. And so what happens when we are paying more, and we need to look at this from a budgetary standpoint, once again, not that I don't support our safety services, but we have to be able to pay these things, and we have to be able to, you know, be very sound fiscally. So I'm still questioning the support or the opposition to this. As I said, I don't believe that we should be sort of weighing in on this matter at this time, but I do think that there will be a time when we do revisit this. Other members of the committee to discuss comments? Other members of administration? Mayor?
I've had several communications of late, one in particular with Director Kerry McCarthy of the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, of which I sit on that group, which is the 30 largest cities in the state of Ohio. One of the things that Kerry McCarthy had indicated to me is that he's meeting with people in the State House to discuss, you know, where things are at, what's the timeline with this. One of the things that he mentioned to me is he doesn't feel that this is a bill that is going to speed its way through. He felt that we have some time. He believed that it would probably be potentially as much as six months before it really gets moving. Then I also had a text communication back and forth with Kent Garrett, the executive director for the Ohio Municipal League. And one of the things that he had indicated to me is that the Ohio Municipal League is opposed to this particular bill, HB 512, as is the Buckeye Institute, which is a nonpartisan nonprofit that does a lot of research into things like this, this particular topic. So they have come out in opposition as well. And so, given that, I think that it's probably prudent that we not, you know, rush into things at this point in time. I think that there is time. I would recommend to council to stay this particular issue until we do get more intel as to where things are with this bill, if council is wanting to oppose or to support, you know, council can figure that out when we get to that point. But again, in reaching out to those that I know are pretty regular communication with our state legislators and the authors of this bill in particular, that, you know, I believe that Mr. McCary, McCarthy is correct, that we've got time.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just say that in my time on council, the Ohio Municipal League has, I'm not saying that blanket should do whatever the Ohio Municipal League says, but they've been a very helpful resource. And I think that they are looking out for the best interests of municipalities in the state of Ohio. So I think we should dig into the particulars of this and look very closely at the budget and decide. I agree with the mayor, we do have some time. That's where I stand on this. Other committee members, noncommittee members? Yes, Member Swank?
Couple of things to add, piggybacking on what the mayor had to say. On Wednesday, the Ohio Municipal League is meeting with Representatives Abrams and Baldridge. I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked with Representative Abrams' aide today. She was able to provide me with, and I'll pass these out, a fact sheet on this for further review. I've talked with a co-sponsor of this bill, our very own representative here, Jay Edwards, his aide. One thought might be, it might be a harebrained idea, but one thought might be, since he's so close, if he does represent us, as we get to that point, inviting him to come to council for a discussion of this, as to why he supports it and why he thinks it's important. To Jeff's comment, there's 10 mills of inside millage. Inside millage is non-voted millage. And that millage is split between the county, the city, and the Athens City School District. I talked with the auditor today at 5:00, to the county auditor, and right now, the six-tenths of a mil that we get from an existing levy for this, we're already doing this, the six-tenths of a mil that we get from the existing levy, three tenths for police, three tenths for fire, adds up to $265,000. That's based on 2021 figures, $265,000. Part of that comes from Athens and Athens Township, and part of that comes from Canaan, excuse me, Athens Township in Athens and Canaan Township in Athens. That's where that money comes from. Because it's inside millage, that millage amount increases as property values go up, unlike school property taxes, that it's an amount of mills, it doesn't go up as your property increases. So as the mayor said, this could kick down the road quite a bit. And I think there's a little bit more information, this fact sheet helps, and I wouldn't be beyond sending an invitation to our local rep and asking him to come over and speak with us. It can hurt to have a conversation.
Other members of council, citizens? Yes, please.
Ryan Goodman, 97 South Green Drive. As a young person, I just want to say I do live in the second ward. It's very hard for me to feel represented in a lot of situations because of my age, and a lot of the decisions being made will continue to affect young people like myself. And I would just implore that the city council and administration not give up this defeatist attitude. It's very hard for me, and I know, like, a lot of the times, I see a lot of bills going through the Ohio House, and I think they're some of the most vile things written. I deeply agree with them, but you, if you check Jay Edwards' email, you'll see lots of emails from myself. One of my favorite movies is The Lorax, because the little Lorax speaks for the trees. And my favorite quote is, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing's going to get better. It's not. So I'm very emotional about this. I care a lot about people my age and young people, and I just hope that you don't just give this defeatist attitude to every big issue. I know we're a littler city compared to Cincinnati, Cleveland, and Columbus, but I think that we do have a voice, and we've done really impactful things here. So please just don't be defeated at every level and feel like it's not going to make a difference, because to me, it does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item is the 22 staffing ordinance. Most of this is things that we have discussed, and I will go through the very specific items here that will be changed in the staffing ordinance. And I'm going to go through all of them and then open it to discussion if anybody has any particular issues. I have questions about the final change. Completed in 2021 is the DEI Training Coordinator, run out of the mayor's office. That is being added to the staffing ordinance. Removing the position of Assistant Groundskeeper in Lands and Building. Changing the title of the Parks Operation Manager to Labor Supervisor, specifically for Cemetery. Creating a new FTE in sanitation in 760, what we call the garbage fund. Removing a position that was a .73 FTE from the Code Office. .3 FTE, a position that is in the Streets Department, simply a name change from Construction Manager to Construction Coordinator. A new position, removing a Project Assistant in the Street Department, a .3 FTE position. Creating an Assistant Director in the Recreation Department in 270. Removing two positions in Recreation, Facilities Operation Manager and Program Operations Manager. Changing the title of the Parks Operation Manager to Labor Supervisor. Removing the Program Specialist position from Fund 271 Rec Center and fund it fully from 270, which is Recreation. Again, the other part, the Assistant Director will be also funded from 271, so that's added in there. The partial FTE, again, of Facilities Operation Manager and Program Operation Manager will be removed from 271. Already mentioned here is the Program Specialist, is being removed from 271 and being funded fully from 270. Changing the title again within the Water, from Construction Manager to Construction Coordinator, only a title change. Removing one Project Assistant's position in Water. Removing a position in Sewer, the Project Assistant. Changing the title again within Sewer, from Construction Manager to Construction Coordinator. And then, one of the questions that I have for the city administration, although I know Director Lucas is not here tonight, is that we talked about the changes in the IT earlier tonight, in the IT management. And we have stricken the CIO position, Internal Services, 865. But we are keeping the System Administrator position in the staffing ordinance. And I'm wondering if you all had any comments on that?
A little bit of oversight, we could strike that. It's not funded in the budget.
Right.
So it's on the staffing ordinance, but the budget didn't have a corresponding amount of money placed into the 100 lines for that. So, you know, one of the things with staffing ordinance changes is, you know, you always talk about increasing and decreasing. We can cut it, you know, I mean, because it's not funded right now, and I have no intention of hiring it if we move forward with the BSSI managed contract, but that's just something that was missed on the staffing ordinance.
Be a lot cleaner. Okay. This is on everybody's drive. That was a lot of information. It is on your drive under Staffing 2022 Revision. Are there any questions for the committee right now? Yes?
Yes, Member Cross. So if a position that we just talked about, if we remove it, does that mean that if we ever want to hire somebody in that position again, in case for some reason we need it, that we have to go through a whole process? Or is it that, oops, sorry about that? Or is it that if we leave it on, but it's unfunded, it could be funded later? So it gives us some flexibility? I guess I'm trying to see how that works.
Yeah, so, you know, historically, the city council has controlled expenditures through, you know, two means. Number one, the staffing ordinance is one. I would say, hey, you know, we're just not going to give you that position. And then the other way is through the budget and not appropriating money to the TC 100s. And so it's basically like two ways to hang on and keep the expenditure from happening. Conceivably, you could leave it in the staffing ordinance but not fund it, and then at some point in the future, go and say, yeah, we need to have this back. We don't have to change the staffing ordinance because it's already there, but we press an additional appropriation into TC 100. Or we can just, if the time comes that we need to do that, is come back to you and say, hey, I need to have it put back in both places.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking, is what's the better approach? If it's just, if we don't fund it? Because IT seems to be something that, because we've talked about how that's going to change, and we're going to have new things, so we might need somebody again. So it seems like there's some logic in saying, eh, leave it in there. We just won't budget it for now, and then we have some flexibility.
We can absolutely leave it in, unfunded.
Or not. Just answer the question.
I think what the City Service Safety Director was pointing out was the fact that it's council that has control over that decision, okay? We seven have to make up our minds whether or not to keep the position or strike it out. It's not up to the administration.
Right.
We have to do that. We have to come to a consensus, have a vote. So at some point, if this really is an issue, someone's going to have to introduce, funny noise, introduce some sort of ordinance legislation to move it one way or the other. Personally, if a position is not being funded, I don't see the point of keeping it there. To me, it's really not much effort to create a position. We do it all the time. But it just, to me, it just makes things cleaner, you know? Then you don't have people wondering, well, there's a position here, but I don't see any money for it. What's it doing there? Hey, I don't know.
Thank you, Member Eisner. Auditor, do you want to chime in?
Well, I was going to move on to something else.
Oh, hold on. I thought you were...
That's a good idea.
I will offer an historic comment, and this is, this is an observation from my part. Councilmember Eisner is correct that the council does make decisions on that, but we do it with input from the auditor's office, which, when I saw your hand raised, I thought you were going to make a comment about it. And we also do it from the advice of the city administration. So it's a collaborative process, and so I'm sure that we'll come to a decision by the time this comes forward.
You're right. I mean, I agree with you 100%, but the buck stops here at some point, literally.
And I think...
I'm very jealous of council power, you know, and I'd like to keep it.
I think Members Philonis has made a very good point and something we should think about. In this case, we have a number of different decisions, right? I mean, we have this outsourcing of IT that we need to make a decision on. I think just hanging on to the CIO position, if we're going to move to the BSSI contract, probably doesn't make sense in my mind. As I said, it probably is cleaner if you, we're going to move in that direction, let's move in that direction and not kind of hang on to the old. But this is a discussion that we need to have as council members. Do other noncommittee members have any input on this? Member Grace?
I would just agree that it's cleaner to not leave the staffing, the position in there if we're not going to fund it, because it's not difficult to put the position back into a staffing ordinance. So, for example, if we try out the outsourcing of our IT, and we enter into that service agreement, and we do that for a couple of years, and we're like, wow, we really want an entire IT team here in-house, we want to keep this. We can recreate those positions in the staffing ordinance without any problem, and that's not a difficult process. I'm speaking to the great skill and contributions provided by our clerk, who would be the one. But the, we, it's, to me, it seems cleaner to include the positions that we intend to fund and hope to fill, rather than keeping positions in that are not going to be funded. But I had a different question. I didn't go through and do the math as far as how many portions of full FTEs are eliminated and how many were added or increased, but what is the balance at the end? What's the change?
Plus 2.7. Plus .27.
Plus .27.
And ultimately, that position is out of the, that was reduced out of the code line and the .73 out of the code line, and then increased to the FTE, that FTE there in the, out of the 760 fund. And I think that Director Riggs came and kind of gave some projections as to that and why he thinks that that's an appropriate expenditure, given the role and the work that's happening in that office.
That was, my other question was related to that change.
Yeah, so I mean, I know it looks like a lot of shift and changes here, but at the end of the day, that's the, that's the...
It seemed like most canceled each other out as you went through. But with regard to that one position, will the responsibilities and role largely remain the same? It's just increasing to a full FTE? And then what does that transition of funds do to our garbage fund?
That's a good question. In recent times, the garbage fund has hurt. We did an increase here recently, and we think we're going to be back in the black, and we have a projection going forward that shows that this change, you know, can be funded as part of that, and we won't have a problem. The majority of the work that Director Riggs sees to be assigned to this position is in administration of the AAHRC contract. You know, right now, what's happening is, you know, a good deal of that work is happening by solid waste officer. And that solid waste officer's job is to go out and enforce, you know, the law on the streets, and they spend a lot of time doing contract administration. Now, it's been okay during COVID, because there's just been less people and less trash generated. And, you know, we talked a little bit last year about how, you know, some of the hit to the garbage fund came from less... to the garbage fund came from less collections due to the COVID decrease. We're kind of coming out of that now, and the administration of that contract is pretty, is pretty important. So the way he sees shifting work in the department, that, you know, eighty percent of the time of that particular position will be spent on that administration of that contract or the office side of that.
Thank you.
Members Swank?
Trying to follow all those, the one that I kind of fixated on was everything related to APR, Parks and Recreation. And one of the things I didn't hear was who's going to manage the pool this year? We talked about Facility Operation Manager position either being eliminated or reclassified. Is there, and I apologize, I don't have my drive here in front of me. Is there some mention in there as to whose responsibility it will be? Ultimately, it falls on the director, but we know she's not going to be down there managing the pool daily, can't do it. Who is that going to, who is that going to fall on? Which of these positions?
So there's a, if you continue down the sheet into the part-time and temporary positions, we're reinstituting the pool manager position specifically. So that's identified there. And that's a six-month employee. I think the thinking before with that Facilities Operation Manager is it's hard to hire a six-month employee. You know, typically, you get someone for a summer, which is a four-month employee, you know, varying levels of skills, and it's tough to find that person. We had lost the pool manager we had several years ago because their spouse got a job in their state, and they were a pretty good employee for several years to function in that six-month role. And so the previous director said, hey, I'd rather go and assign these duties to this Facilities Operation Manager, which is a full-time position that would then do other things in the other, in the other part of the year. That didn't pan out. And so as we go into this, this summer, we fully recognize that that pool is a no-fail mission this year. And so, you know, having a dedicated, even if it's a temporary or a six-month employee person who's got, you know, complete eyes on target for that pool has got to happen. And so that's, that's the approach that we're going to take, at least for this year. You know, maybe going into 2023, we'll say, hey, we're kind of well, we might want to go a different direction. But for now, we think that's the best approach.
Thanks. Thank you, Members Swank and Director Stone. I did not go down to the seasonal, part-time and seasonal employee changes. There is one added cemetery maintenance position, seasonal, and then also the pool manager. Thank you for asking, Members Swank. Other questions about staffing changes? Just a final, the final comment on the discussion about whether to leave in non-funded positions or not. It might work okay for one or two, but if it's a normal practice and then we have all of these different positions, then it might get kind of complicated. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and strike them, but that's, that's my feeling. Auditor Hecht?
Regarding the extra position, if you have to come back to council to ask for the funding, you can just ask for the position then. As you said, it is clear. I just wanted to comment on those last couple pages. Looking at this, I've been looking at this stuff for a long time because we're the ones that pay everybody. And just to make sure that everybody remembers the minimum wage for the city ordinance that council passed last year. And so all of those seasonal, part-time pool employees now will be starting at at least eleven dollars an hour. That's up from nine, what we had before.
Thank you, Auditor Hecht, for that additional information. And the pool manager actually starts at thirteen, so there's a little bit of a higher bump there.
Councilmember Crowell?
Yes, Mayor.
I just want to briefly go back to the IT position. You know, I would ask council to be open to any other ideas that my administration might have for that position rather than immediately striking it. So might have some conversations tomorrow at the mayor auditor meeting.
Mayor, not the CIO, but the administrative position.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you. Yeah, it currently is not stricken in the current staffing ordinance.
Yes.
And thank you. Other questions, citizens? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, appropriations. The first appropriation will be five thousand dollars to the general fund for the auditor who needs a new printer slash copier. I believe it's, the old one's just gone kaput.
They're not going to support it anymore.
No longer support it.
We've had it for quite a few years.
Any questions on that item on the appropriations?
Can we sell it?
Yes, Member McCary.
Am I understanding five thousand dollars for a single printer?
Printer or copier?
Have you seen these things?
Auditor, go ahead.
Are you saying that's too much or not?
I would just love to understand why it would cost that much.
Well, the printers in our office, Debbie, you want to tell them how much a printer costs? More than that. It's, they get a lot of work. There's a lot going on in my office, and it takes kind of a heavy-duty printer. I will say this, my deputy auditor, who's in charge of purchasing, won't let us get a color one, so we are cutting corners where we can. But, yeah, it might not cost that much when it comes right down to it. We've had people in the office ask for separate trays because often you go and you pick up a bunch of papers and it's got everybody's mixed in. But we're still debating that because, you know, we're kind of cheap about all that stuff when we can be. But, yeah, it's actually a reasonable cost for an office printer that's used by a lot of people. And we do unfortunately still print off a lot of work, papers, because we have to. We just need to.
But does it be considered an industrial-level printer?
Well, no. I'd say the one in the council office is more industrial than ours or even next door in the law director's office. But, yeah, it's not something you would put in your home. Period. I mean, it stands on the floor and, you know, I just kind of feel.
Other questions? Yes, Members?
I was going to say, just a quick perusal of good old Google here. Yes, some of these printer prices are shocking, like eight thousand, nine thousand dollars. So, yeah, I guess that's, I also was slightly amazed by the sound of a five thousand dollar printer, having only ever had a little Canon ninety-dollar printer at home. Why doesn't that work? Obviously, because you need to do more than one little piece of paper per minute. So, yeah, that's crazy. Wow.
Other comments? All right, next item is appropriation of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Tax Incremental Finance Fund, which is the schools, school district share. Any questions about that appropriation?
Nope.
And the next one is the six thousand dollars to the general fund, which the Director Stone brought up earlier for structural repairs to headquarters. We hope that does it, but we shall see. And as explained earlier, that was the amount over the fifty thousand dollars mark where council has to approve. Any questions about that extra money for the repair? And then some transfers. We are transferring two hundred thousand dollars from the Water Fund Administration to the Water Debt Fund. We are transferring one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the ARPA Fund to the Community Center Operations Fund, again, helping that fund survive with some of our federal American Rescue Plan Act monies, again, which, to make the argument about the financial health of municipalities. I'm sorry, any questions on these first two items? Moving on to the next item, transferring fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund to the Cemetery Fund. We have very little money coming into our cemetery, and we have a lot of maintenance that has to happen at the cemetery, so we need to. Committee members, any questions on the Cemetery Fund? Yes, go ahead.
I thought this was a dead issue a long time ago.
Okay. Thank you, Member Reisner. It is nine o'clock, isn't it? Okay. Members Swank, go ahead.
No pun intended there. Having just buried a relative, I haven't learned more about cemeteries in the last ten days than I really care to. These are just questions, and if they're better handled offline, please let me know. How many cemeteries are we responsible for now?
Two.
And in those two cemeteries, how many available lots are still for sale? Any idea?
We know, we don't know right now.
Okay.
I can tell you offline.
And have we taken a look at how we price the sale of those and how that might possibly affect in a positive way our Cemetery Fund? Have we done that recently?
I believe Mr. Cheeky has taken a very close look at lots of possible ways to.
So he would be the person I should get a hold of? Okay, great. Thank you.
We have done that in recent years. So we're market rate.
We just had a burial last week, so it's.
Okay, and moving on, transferring one hundred, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars from the Parking Garage Fund to the Parking Garage Debt Fund, again, to pay our loans. And then an inter-fund transfer of five thousand dollars from the Parking Garage Fund to the General Fund as part of the re, sort of, payment schedule that we set up when we were moving funds around because of the pandemic. Any questions about those final items about parking garage from the committee, from other council members, citizens, administration?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to, the next item is income tax. This is, it is bookkeeping, I suppose. We need to update our Code of Ordinances regarding the percentages for the, for the tax rates that are in our Code of Ordinances, because every five years, I'm going to let the auditor speak to this because she's the one who taught me, and so I might as well hear it from her.
We now have two tax sections in our code because of all the changes that happened several years ago. And because people, we have delinquent taxpayers, and we have to keep the old section in there because if they're paying a delinquent tax that falls under the old code, we still have to use those numbers and rules. Anyway, this would be in the newer part. And we didn't, we missed a spot where we should have increased the one point six five percent to one point eight five percent. And then the date that that was effective goes along with it. The other, the breakdowns for the different funds are in there, but we got them right, but we don't have that total right. So it's kind of a minor change. We looked for other things, but it's just complicated. A lot of the information is used in more than one place, and we missed that.
Great, thank you. Any questions about updating ordinances, other council members, citizens, administration? Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Housing Revolving Loan Fund. This is an administration agreement. The Housing Revolving Loan Fund is between the Ohio Department of Development and the City of Athens. This is a five-year agreement from 2022 through 2026. And this is the Office of Community Development Administrators, the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program, as well as the Home Partnership that we talk a lot about, CDBG grants that the city is able to utilize. And this is simply the agreement that we authorize the City Administration to engage with the Department of Development. Any questions from City Council on this revolving loan fund administration agreement?
Yes, Member Crowell.
Yes.
I do have a question. So is this, have we had this, is this something new? Or is this something we've been doing for a long time? Assuming there's been some CB, yeah. Okay. And so the language has essentially not changed? This is just another round, basically?
Excellent question. I did not do any comparisons between this and the previous agreement. I would imagine there's not a lot of differences between this, except for the dates in previous agreements, but I will defer to the clerk or to the City Administration if they know.
We can go back and look at the contract and see if there.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I want to know some specifics about, the purpose and the goal say, improving the affordable housing stock and providing for the affordable housing needs of low and moderate-income persons and designated areas of the Housing Revolving Loan Fund. So are there some specifics that you can provide that we've used them in the past? And what are some things that we're planning on? Or is this sort of a general thing and we can make it up as we go? I mean, where are we with actually using the money?
If I'm not mistaken, there is the home improvement, or, this isn't related to CHIP. CHIP is another program too, which is for housing improvements.
It mentions CHIP in here, actually, yeah.
Is this agreement with the EDC?
See, there's the EDC revolving loan fund for economic development.
Right, we have two revolving loan funds.
Yeah, this is a different.
And then there's the housing.
Yeah, this is specifically related, it says, as Member Crowell said, the Ohio Department of Development is the grantor. And this has to do with the Home Investment Partnership and the CBDG.
And then that seventy-five thousand dollars we get for grants inside the OHS. Go ahead.
We will get back to you.
Well, I mean, part of the reason I bring this up is because there was a, I received this letter, which I mentioned earlier, about the sidewalks and the big problem with the sidewalks. And somebody mentioned to me that there could be a possibility, maybe, that there's CBGD money for areas where the sidewalks are really bad, but the homeowners or property owners don't really have the financial capacity to do anything about it. So if there's any possibility that perhaps we could fix some of the really bad streets on the west side through some of this money, that would, I think, enhance housing and certainly safety in the community. Now, I don't know if that's possible, but I thought, well, I'm trying to be creative here. You know, what is possible?
Yeah, again, let me look into that to see if that is possible and what is, you know, all the different things that are possible with that. You know, my only, the only thing I will say to that is, you know, if it's a, is owned by the resident who lives there as opposed to a rental unit with a sidewalk that is in need of repair, I mean, the repair of sidewalks is a responsibility of the homeowner or the landlord.
I know that.
But to your point, yeah, no, to your point, and well-taken, that if this money could be used for sidewalk repair, because, you know, to have a sidewalk replaced, you know, is expensive.
Very.
So.
Excellent point. Auditor?
I told you wrong a minute ago. So I had the other revolving loan fund in mind. This would involve the CHIP monies. However, in the city, there are, you know, poverty guidelines for people who are, in the City of Athens, not very many people need that, who also own their house, own their property, need those guidelines. We own two houses that we do rent out that follow where we, the residents pay a reduced, they're managed by Metropolitan Housing, and they pay a reduced amount of rent compared to, and part of it is paid through this. We also, so we pay for those houses and they're subsidized for that. We do get small grants every year, usually around seventy-five thousand, but I don't think we got one. We missed a year, a couple of years ago or something, didn't get it. But that money could be used for that, but they also have to fall under the income guidelines that are set forth by the development.
Yeah, some of the, some of the repairs that I am aware of under the CHIP program have been, you know, a roof replacement or heating and cooling replacements in a home. But to your point with the sidewalks, we'll certainly look into that to see if that's a permissible expense. Yeah. Yeah. So what's the question? First one's going to go to the CDBG.
Well, Mr. Ray, that's something.
We did, gosh, I was on City Council, and we authorized the use of that, this CDBG funding for our house that the city owns next to Station Two. I believe it was around about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to do a complete overhaul of the inside to make it ADA accessible. It does have a ramp in the front of the house at this point and accessibility in the back, but it can be used for that as well with the city-owned properties. The city does own two properties, one of them's on Central Avenue, and the other one is on Richland Avenue. We divested ourselves of two others that were on Blackburn Road by selling one and donating the other to the Metropolitan Housing Authority for people with various needs.
Yeah, I'm bringing this up also, Mayor Patterson, because this has come up continually, and they're dangerous. I have a friend out in California, but not. I have a friend out in California, but nonetheless, I'll tell you this brief story, and she was going to serve on jury duty and tripped and fell on a very bad sidewalk, and she is suing the city for a substantial amount of money. So I think there is, it's not just about helping out the convenience, but I wouldn't want the city to be in that position. So if we can do something about it, and there's certain areas that are really terrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Members Philons. Other comments on this agreement? Okay, moving on to the last item on finance and personnel, the internet auction. This is the authority to sell unneeded or obsolete items. This authorizes, this ordinance authorizes the sale of these items by internet auction. And this really authorizes the service safety director to enter into an agreement with the government auction service to conduct said auctions. I see in our drive, Clerk Walker, that we have a list of about thirty-one vehicles, and I don't know if that's associated with-
That's different.
Oh, okay, okay, I saw that, I wasn't sure if it's associated. So this is just an annual ordinance that gives the city administration the authority to sell these items via internet auction. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance to see? We'll see next week. Yes, Member Carrick?
Thank you. I am familiar with the university's operations when it comes to surplus management and the types of items, bicycles, furniture, that we see, to see there. Can you give some examples of what we tend to see in this surplus auction?
Predators.
It does appear, I mean, often it is vehicles or heavy equipment?
Not necessarily. We can't, so this ordinance gives authority, so the state law says you gotta dispose of public property a certain way, and internet is not one of the things that is on state law, but state law allows for municipalities to opt into it, and they pass an ordinance every year that says you can use this service. So that's what you're doing, is saying you can use it as a mechanism, as opposed to having an auctioneer, you know, and everybody come down to the service to do an auction place. It gives us, allows us to cast a wider net. Council still has to individually authorize disposal of anything that is valued at more than a thousand dollars. So, you know, this isn't a cart watch, this is just allowing us to use this tool. If we want to dispose of something that has a worth of more than a thousand dollars, you gotta come back and ask council for authority to do that. You know, in many cases, there's evidence, like police evidence, that is no longer necessary as it returned, for whatever reason, back to the, you know, folks associated with that. That case, you know, maybe it was seized in a criminal activity, so that's a thing that can be on there, office equipment could be on there. Oftentimes, e-waste, in the old days, there were copiers, when there was a useful life beyond the end. Now, you know, that really ultimately ends up being e-waste, and I work with AHRC to dispose of it versus trying to do it via a, you know, an online auction site. But, yeah, that's all we go on.
Thank you. I was also going to ask if we have these annually or any regular points?
It's not any regular.
No.
It's kinda as needed, it's once a building get full of stuff. You know, I think in the, if we're successful in these coming months with some work in the Armory, there's a whole room on the second floor of the Armory that has pieces of police cruisers from years of upgrading them. Those would be something we would probably auction that way.
Very old pieces.
Electors items.
Old radio news, something like that.
Okay, other comments on this item? Citizens Administration, okay, thank you, that ends finance and personnel.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Reisner, joined by Councilmembers Grace, Ziff, and Swank.
All righty, we only have two items.
Unlike, which came previous. We have two items, Uptown Improvement Project, project number three twenty-nine, and then following that will be vehicle disposal. So Uptown Improvement Project, I see we have several items on our disk drive that give a history of the ordinances that when, hold on here, these were first approved and proposed. Member Costas, who was head of transportation, was the spearhead, well, certainly a driving force behind this, to get better uptown transportation, and there's a very nice report here, I think it's on fifty-six pages. So where do we go from here?
So that's, as you mentioned, Member Reisner, this is a multi-year endeavor, and I wanna say, twenty-seventeen timeframe, I think this-
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. So there was a grant that came through the Athens City County Health Department for an active transportation plan, and ultimately that grant paid for consultancy to look at the central business district to try to increase active transportation. And what we did is, because we had done a bike and pedestrian master plan several years earlier, we asked the central business district study that this consultancy did, and there was an ad hoc committee, you know, formed, and they solicited input from business owners and pedestrians and cyclists and various funds as they built this, we asked them to make it an appendix of that bike and pedestrian master plan. So that's what that fifty-six page document is. From that, we used that document to seek transportation enhancement funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation, and we received funding, about a million dollars to be spent here in upcoming years. I forget exactly which year we have to spend. I wanna say it's, we had to have that committed by June of twenty-three, we have to have a project sold in June of twenty-three, and so ultimately, this is the design associated with that work. And this is specifically looking at the cross streets in the central business district. So if you remember, a few years ago, we did a project on Union Street from Court Street to Congress, and kinda enhanced that cross street. So the grant was for the other half of Union Street in the uptown area, kinda in front of the college green, and then the two sides of Washington Street, one block over on either side of Court Street, and the two sides of State Street, one block over on either side of Court Street. And that's what the primary focus of this particular project is.
Okay.
So are there any drawings or?
You can look at the proposal, and there was a series of, I'm sorry, not the proposal, but the active transportation plan?
Oh, that fifty-six page, okay, okay.
And so this is to hire a design firm to do the, both the conceptual design and the actual construction drawings associated with those improvements. That's what this appropriation and authorization that we're requesting is.
So let me ask it a different way. Has the administration prioritized areas that they think might be next in line? And I ask that in the context of the block on Union Street. If I were a photographer, marketing the city of Athens, that would be the first place I would go. That block is absolutely beautiful, it's been well-executed, it's very well-maintained. Where do we go from there?
Well, this would be, as Director Stone was saying, this is gonna be, you know, Congress to college for Washington Street, same kind of concept as doing the street scapegoat, rethinking it, the same would hold true for State Street between college and Congress as well.
Do we have enough money to do both of those?
We do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that was the whole concept. I think, you know, to your point, I feel that the West Union between college, between Court and Congress was a real success. And so after seeing that, and I think the citizenry getting the, you know, look and feel of that, to move this forward and continue to do this same kind of concept right on down to further improve, you know, our historic retail corridor here in the city of Athens and the gateway to the college, or university, you know, was just, was the right thing to do, moving this forward.
One thing you'll note in that fifty-six page study is a recommendation to make Court Street two ways, or go back to two ways, like it was in the old days. Now, we don't necessarily have to do that, per se, but that would be one thing that this consultant will look at, is the cost associated with doing that. And that'll be a decision on down the road whether or not we actually do it. But the reason for that is, from an economic development perspective, there's a case to be made for central business districts to, if you don't need bidirectional one-way streets, you shouldn't have them because of they're detrimental to business. If you don't need them to move traffic, they're detrimental to businesses.
That would also include the one remaining block of Union. If you think about it, we have one one-way block on Union Street, and it's from Congress to Court Street. Everything else to include Jeff Hill, that was one-way, that was switched back in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, because I didn't see the need for that to be a one-way street, it just jammed up the flow of vehicles through there. So we'll study all that.
Okay. Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Reisner. I just want to say that this has, once again, it's a multi-year, really great project. The city has been very successful in getting significant grant funding to make these improvements to our uptown, and I think it'll be really helpful to be able to duplicate some of the efforts that were made on Union Street moving over to Washington and State Street, and I think that will be beneficial to our businesses, and I'm excited to see what the plans bring.
Other members of council? Member Crowell?
I'll just represent former Member Costas here and say that, you know, alternative transportation and all, you know, we know that this is part of the plan, we know this is, but I would just encourage us all to continue to look at the many different modes of travel that we use in the uptown area. Thank you.
Member Ziff?
Thank you, Member Reisner. Yeah, I was gonna say, just to that same point that Member Crowell brought up, is I believe I read it somewhere in this very large document about adding more bike racks and things like that, and different types of bike racks, some that could even be incorporated with parking meters. So it's nice to see all that stuff being taken into account, because we are obviously trying to make Athens more and more bicycle-friendly, so, yeah, definitely another interesting thing to keep an eye on. Those parking meter ones are kinda interesting, it's kinda wild.
Any other questions concerning this topic? Members of the audience? Auditor? Okay. Next item, vehicle disposal. I think we have a sheet here, that's the drive. Quite a few vehicles here. You gonna get rid of all of them at once?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is the first tranche, as we moved to the lease structure that we did in last year, and we're moving to this enterprise model where we're leasing. Some of these are not being replaced with, so we're shrinking the size of the fleet, but ultimately, over the next couple of years, as things get ordered and switched out with enterprise, this is the first tranche of that.
So can you give me an estimate of how many you think you would dispose of this year?
Well, there's thirty-eight on this list. My gut feel is we're gonna be around twenty this year.
Oh, that's significant.
Like when you look at orders, because we're not giving this away and stopping using it until a new one arrives.
Right.
So given the lead time on some of these, that, you know, we order against the lease, it won't be, and we won't start paying on that lease until it arrives as well, so it's not like they're all going away at once.
Well, I remember, you know, in the past, our disposal ordinances for vehicles, this thing, I guess, could be a little more complicated.
Once we dispose of them, it won't be.
Well, no, but you need- But usually, you come to us and you say, well, here's a list, and the VIN numbers, and we're gonna get rid of, like, five or six vehicles, and we'll say, okay, fine, we'll have a vote. How's that gonna work when you're sort of going item by item by item? Am I being clear on that?
Yeah, I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, I do. I believe I do. And maybe an approach to this, Councilmember Reisner, would be that we give quarterly updates to council as to how many of the vehicles that are on this list have, we have gone through the process with enterprise. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And I think that's something that we can certainly do, where we're just, with the passage of the ordinance, and maybe even have a clause to where there's a quarterly update as to the vehicles that have been disposed of on this particular list, which would be fine. I mean, that's not difficult to do, as we do work with enterprise and have these changed over.
Questions from the committee?
Historically, how have we sold these vehicles?
Through one of those, well, there's several different methods. You know, if you go back ten years, we did the auctioneer, that people came down to the city garage, and, you know, you bid on it. Then we moved to the internet auction. As we've disposed, you know, recently, we've done some donations to other localities, particularly with public safety vehicles, and then, you know, we try whenever we can to do a trade-in towards a new vehicle, where we buy a new vehicle. But because we're moving to this leasing model instead of buying, what will ultimately happen is enterprise will take the vehicle, will sell it, and then will credit the revenue associated with selling it to the ultimate, to reduce the lease amount on the vehicle that it plays.
So if I hear you right, enterprise is going to determine the value of these vehicles?
Well, it'll be a market value that they can, the best price that they can get.
Well, the reason I ask this, Director Stone, is two months ago, I entered the used car market, had a car we didn't need. Just to make a very long story short, bought the car, it's a two thousand fourteen car, I bought it in two thousand seventeen with nineteen thousand miles on it. I drove it from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, four years, put another twenty thousand miles on it. Car's now up to thirty-nine thousand dollars, or thirty-nine thousand miles. I sold that car to CarMax for a thousand dollars more than I paid for it. And like getting at is here, might it be wise to explore some other avenues? Without knowing the mileage on these cars, I have no idea of the value, but at least to explore that to see if we can maximize the value of property we already own.
I'd encourage you, Member Swank, to watch the council recording when the enterprise representative gave the presentation to council that talked about the methodology by which they dispose of these vehicles and how they sell them on the market, and their ability to move vehicles for a good price. I think they'll do better than us, because of, you know, the fact that they move vehicles so frequently and they do this, but, you know, certainly, when we entered that contract, it was understood that they would be the ones that would dispose of vehicles and then ultimately credit it to the amount that we're leasing. I mean, we don't have to do that, we don't have to give them a one-for-one, but, and we can certainly look at different options, but I think they'll do better than us.
Yeah, well, just a thought, and, you know, this is just firsthand, I can't believe you can drive a car for four years, put twenty thousand miles on it and get-
That was one of the things that sold us when we worked with them, was they said, hey, look, we're selling vehicles for more than they were purchased for, especially when they're buying at a government rate, because they're buying and then leasing, you know, to us at a rate, and they can buy because they're buying for a government agency at a reduced amount, and then they're selling it in the aftermarket for, you know, a market rate.
Retail, yeah.
So, yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you. Member Swank, okay. I just wanna, I just wanna support what you were saying, I understand where you're coming from, because right now, with the supply chain issues and whatnot, the cost of used cars, in fact, any cars, and as you know, if you try to rent it, it's crazy too, so the prices are ridiculously high, but I'm sure that they're taking that into consideration as they do this. But I think, you know, because it's such a unique situation right now, it's probably worth looking at monitoring.
We're doing a monthly call with, they have, we have a rep assigned to us from enterprise to discuss these matters. If you're interested in participating in that monthly call and talking about specific models and their ability to get, by all means, you can put you in.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Director Stone.
Councilmember Reisner?
I'm sorry?
Councilmember Crowell?
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I noticed that one of the vehicles on the list has a manufacturer date of nineteen ninety-seven, which would classify it as a historical vehicle. Can we get a few extra dollars?
Oh, way to sell the nineteen seventy-nine.
Oh, now we're talking. We're all going to Germany next year.
We're all going, we're all going to Germany next year.
Is it antique or classic?
I don't know. I always had twenty-five years.
Okay, any other questions? Council, elected officials, audience? Okay, that concludes Transportation and Committee.
All right, we're moving on to our last committee meeting, Planning and Development, chaired by Councilmember Grease, joined by Councilmembers Crowe, McCary, and Stillness.
Are you staying awake, Debbie? Are you staying awake? Okay, we have only two items on our agenda for this evening, and the, I believe they should both be very straightforward. The first item is utility easements, and the city is in receipt of a couple of utility easements, and council needs to approve these. There is one on South Blackburn Road, and this provides the city with access for utility And so we have an agreement between the city and the Blenkinships, who own the property on which the easement is being granted. And there is a second easement at the Marietta Area Healthcare, and that is also granting access to the city across property owned by another entity for access to utility services primarily. And these copies of both easement agreements are on the drive. And is there anything in addition to that information, Director Stone?
We'll try to do better at getting easements granted to the city before this body to formally accept. You know, we always would, you know, if we ever were to grant to somebody, there's no way you can do that without council authorizing it. Well, it's supposed to happen in both directions, and, you know, there's a number of ones that have crossed, you know, various parts of the city and, you know, in the last twenty years, where I can't say definitively they came before council and got accepted by council. These are ones that I caught and I said, yeah, council's got to accept these. And so we got them to you, but, but we'll try to, we'll try to be more timely.
Thank you for that. And yeah, they're pretty straightforward easement agreements.
Well, I just.
Yes, Members of the House.
Yeah, I just had one question about it. In reading over the Marietta Health one, it referred to Exhibit A, which I assumed would be a drawing, and I did not see an Exhibit A. So I'd feel more comfortable if they always had those drawings with them, so I know exactly what I'm doing with it.
I noticed that the attachment was missing as well. So, thank you. Member McCary, did you have another question? Okay. Are there any questions from other members of council? Members of the audience or administration? Okay. Oh, Member Crowe.
Sorry, just a comment. One of these easements refers to the purchase or the ownership by the Ohio Company, which was the original, you know, ownership of land in this area, which I found pretty fascinating. Sorry, just a comment.
It is, they're really interesting to read through sometimes, but yeah, I decided I was not going to read the entire description.
Oh, we got plenty of time.
Of the easements, but they're on the drive if anyone would like to. That information is there. For the precise location is provided by the surveyors. And the final item on the agenda this evening is a Title Forty-nine application for Good Works. And this is over on Central Avenue, the Good Works building. And within the city, we have a process through which individuals or entities can request the use of the city's public rights of way, and that is what this is. Good Works is, has requested permission to place a handicap accessible parking space on, at least partially on the city's right-of-way at their, I believe this is for their new building over on Central Avenue. And this, the process starts with the Office of Code Enforcement, and they fill out an application, and then is approved by council at the initial application time, but then in future is, does not need to come before council for review unless there are significant changes to the plan for the use of the public's right-of-way. And so this is the application from Good Works for that use. Are there any questions from members of the committee?
I do have a really simple question. That is, is it standard practice for the situations of this kind that the neighboring property owners are aware of this kind of thing and have, can weigh in or reject it one way or the other?
If variances are requested. Yeah, this, well, I wasn't sure that that was the same issue. There's, there's an attachment from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but that is relative to setbacks.
Right.
And not related to the parking space, though it isn't. So I don't, years ago, this was called a ten-year revocable renewable license. And I had one at a property because the parking spaces were in the city's right-of-way. But I don't remember now. Are adjacent property owners notified?
Not for Title Forty-nine, use of the right-of-way. There are special right-of-way permit, which used to be called revocable license, and when we revised our right-of-way law and created Title Forty-nine to deal with, you know, management of our right-of-ways better, we changed it to make it special use of the right-of-way, basically, and have individuals get these. In most cases, they are parking that then is designated for that particular property. It's usually on the right-of-way but off of the street. So in this particular instance, Central Avenue is sixty feet wide, the right-of-way, whereas the street's probably fourteen feet wide, and Good Works is asking for a space that is in that space outside of the roadway that's going to be specific for their property. In many cases, there's a parking requirement for a rental, say, for instance, a rental permit, and someone will request for use of the right-of-way in order to meet the parking requirement associated with a rental for a space outside of the roadway but in the right-of-way still. And that's a lot of times where you see these special use of the right-of-way. But there's other ones, like for instance, we just had one go through at the end of last, last term about the, what the haaning for casa, because it sticks, not casa, because it sticks out into the right-of-way. So there are any number of different things, but there is no notification requirement other than this is a public meeting that it goes, that it goes through. As opposed to zoning, variance in zoning, which there is a notice requirement for variance in zoning prior to that BZA meeting where people request a variance.
And the other common use for this is signage, like if.
Yeah.
A sign will be placed in the public's right-of-way for a particular organization or business.
Thank you, Director Stone. Thank you, Member Grease.
Are there any other questions from members of the committee? Other members of council? Administration or the audience? Okay, that concludes Planning and Development.
And we stand adjourned at nine forty-two, and the meeting next week will be Tuesday, January eighteenth, not Monday. It will be on Tuesday because it's, Monday is a federal holiday.